Good morning and welcome to the Jefferson County Commission meeting. Today is May 4th, it's 9:30 AM. We'll start off by prayer from Pastor Van. And you don't mind pronouncing your last name for?
Marso.
There you go.
Good morning. Father, we thank you for this new morning. We're mindful that your word tells us that your mercies are new every morning. We will count on that, Lord. I thank you for this group that's gathered here today. Those who are in projects, working, developing, the planning commission with their good work and difficult work, Lord, and I just pray for wisdom. Your word tells us that when we lack wisdom, we'll turn to you and that you'll give us wisdom from above that is peaceful and pure. So we just want to pause for a moment on this national day of prayer and lift up our nation, lift up our president, our governor, our mayors, our leaders, our police, our sheriff here, Lord. Thank you that we live in an orderly community, a peaceful and quiet community today, Lord, and I pray that you would cover us with your good hand and keep us safe today. Lord, we just thank you most of all for the Lord Jesus Christ who took our sin to the cross. It's in his name that we pray and ask for your blessing today. Amen.
If everybody could remain standing for the life. Five minutes for being six, 1.3. Are there any objections? Okay, all right. There are no other objections if there are any other approved as written. April 18, 2023, by 11. Any objections?
One moment I did want to mention on number 11. On those minutes, it does say that the consensus of the commission, the director of the state return to May 4th commission meeting with additional information and updates. I did ask, we did ask Mr. Fred Kinder to return as well, and I just wanted to add that to the record.
This is for the label.
No, I'm sorry, I'm looking at April 6.
Okay, so sorry, okay.
Number 11.
All right.
Thank you.
April 18, 2023, are there no objections approved as written? April 20, 23, 2023 minutes, are there any objections?
Yes. Do you want to go first?
No, ma'am, you go first.
So under presentations, number three, I believe it was four to one vote for Eddie and not three to two. I think that was the opposing votes.
That is true.
That was going to be my objection as well.
Immediately proceeding, number six, Jennifer Verdoux, the motion at the top. I don't know that we made a motion. I think we did a raise of hands for the vote, and I think it was.
She didn't present. Jennifer Verdoux didn't present.
No, it was immediately above that. I don't have a page number to give you, so it's when we were voting for Trac County City Council, JCPA.
Yeah, it was because Steve and I had.
It was raised as the JCPA was three to two.
Three to four, yeah, Elizabeth Rickett. And I think it was just a hand raised. I don't think she made an actual motion.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, and then I believe on the back, the page behind that, under old business down at the bottom, I believe that was a three to two vote under the CPA firm with Kraus and Jackson.
Any other objections for April 20, 2023? Maybe there's changes, some changes were approved as. Councillor Table, April 27, 2023, about $29,489.79 of their objections that is approved. For Councillor Table to make 4.23, about $237,482.31 of their objections that is approved. Approval of manual checks for April 28, 2023, about $169,170.85 of their objections that is approved. Or manual checks only 5.3, $42,114.54 of their objections that is approved. For approval of requisitions, make 4.23, about $87,308.62 of their objections that is approved. Approval payroll for April 28, 2023, $283,350.77 of their objections that is approved. Any announcements, Cindy? All right, so move on. We'll move on to public comment. We're going to start with Mark.
You all need to understand that those who subject others to anything religious against their will are violating their rights. We need to get off this kick that our nation was founded as a Christian. This is delusional. It shows a complete lack of the ability to grasp our history and trying to change it to suit your bigotry. Most immigrants by far settled this country because they did not want to be told what or how to practice a religion which they didn't believe. Many of those were even persecuted by, get this, other Christians, even though they were also Christians but of another sect of denomination. This fiction has been happening all along and is still happening today, obviously. The irony of this clearly goes over many of you all's heads, but the reality, the most prevalent or primary reason why people came here is for the possibilities of economic opportunities. So trying to make this country into a Christian nation is a relatively new phenomenon, and it goes against what the founders envisioned. And it also goes against all democratic values and ideals, specifically that all people can equally practice their own faith or none at all. It's high time to completely rescind your prayer policy. By the way, how's this religious crap working out for you all? With the mess you're making in the county's finances and administration, still forever running things by starting crap on social media, having people quit left and right because of your crap, churn, churn, churn. No wonder no one lasts very long and their jobs are doing well at them. No one wants to keep working for you because you make it hard for them. You won't work with them or want to serve the public like elected officials are supposed to do in a democracy. You all need to keep from sticking your nose in on the wrong side of people's business and start minding your own. Such incompetence can't be just mistakes. No one can be that stupid, so it must be intentional, but for what real purpose?
Hey, next we have Nancy. Nancy, what's your last name?
Cronin.
Cronin, okay.
Yes, I'd like to tell the state to appropriate enough money to allow Jefferson County residents to access the internet suite with a secure connection without interruptions. So I know they're laying fiber optic cable in the county, but Frontier is not only option because of. And Frontier just raised my bill five dollars a month, so now I'm seven dollars a month. And in the past, Frontier has allowed for discounts for suboptimal speeds, but no longer they said. My speeds are as low as zero, 0.5 megabytes per second. That was on a level. We live to save secure connections, thank you, is not. So with an average speed of 1.8 megabytes per second, which is less than eight percent of the federal commission, communication commissions, project speed recommendation 25 megabytes per second. So the FCC in 2015 changes guideline from less than four megabytes per second to 25 megabytes per second. So in the years past, Frontier has decreased speeds from that four megabytes up to less than two megabytes per second. So my speed never averages more than two megabytes per second. The Frontier states my expected range of speed to be 1.312 to 2.64 megabytes per second. So now Frontier states that this speed is due to, quote, congestion and other traffic on the network or internet, unquote. So I received an email from Frontier's team to stay on plan, okay, which pay change to another plan, which I was told there isn't any other plan or cancel my plan. I have no other option. So this is what I'm asking. I called, called this follow-up, and they had an article in the Observer that said, "We are suboptimal federal speed, and I targeted only and only if we can run it." So eight tenths of a mile up my road, I have, the speed is up there. Comcast refuses to come down the road. Unless in three miles from Shepherdstown, they won't come. Thank you.
Next, we have David Tam.
David Tam, Blackstone resident, taxpayer of the county. I hope everyone is doing well with all the different things happening in the world. Several months ago, I overheard a conversation with someone that cannot afford professional services. I use the term angel fund. I've seen this in other professions that I have participated within. I made a generous contribution and the party accepted. Since that time, the angel fund that I helped start has gained huge participation. The recipients have been truly heartfelt. I hope others will keep in mind when they see a need that they can assist. Presentation four, Parks and Rights. Again, there is no additional paperwork requesting for the light show or the cost or to get a permit from the state of West Virginia to have such a light show. This is also, there is also no listing requirement of an ambulance or fire equipment to be available on site. So making this information known is required. The second portion of Parks and Rights is to sign an approval for a grant for $925,000 earmarked with Shelley Moore Capito. I'm concerned if the commissioners have read all 36 pages in the 11 different agencies that are, that you're agreeing to and to meet all the requirements. Hope you all read it. I did. There is no documentation of what this grant is to accomplish. I'm deeply concerned that the request, that there is a request of public comment. Have yet to see any documentation of Project Three for the public where they can make the comment. Basically, you have to post what this is going to be so someone can make unfinished business. Presentation four, Jefferson County Road Summit. I believe this is the second request for funding. On the agenda request is marked, is there any funding requested? This request was marked no. There is additional documentation asked for $1,500. There were 21 invitations, only 11 possible participation. Not the sum of 40 requested, the $25 per person, which would be $1,000, or the $500. It's hard to be safe with the concerns of this county. I'll have my.
All right, next we're going to move to item number one, Ms. Angie Banks. I'm sorry, you have a comment? Okay, you're on the side, I'll cheat. And what's your name?
Stacy Tab. Good morning. I don't normally talk about county finances, but this morning I would like to talk about a financial aspect of our county, starting with the EMS transitions. The county, like many others, has received parking funds, and that's what this commission is utilizing to ease into this transition of a county-operated emergency response. That money is temporary. I haven't seen any long-term plans on how we're going to fund this. Recently, I heard that there's two additional stations now that's felt that we need to lease, and a comment was made, well, you know, the groundwork's already been laid. Yes, paperwork, but the cost to lease that, to have additional ambulances to staff this, where is that money coming from? And that leads me into what I really came here to speak about this morning was posts that were shared on social media by Commissioner Kraus about the potential for a pilot agreement for a solar installation. In her comments, she focused about transparency and that a special meeting has been asked for so that we can talk with a solar developer about a pilot agreement, a payment in lieu of taxes. All the time this community is told, we need these businesses, we need these commercial entities because we need the tax revenue to fund services. Our schools, we have two new schools being built. There was funding in place, and now when it comes time to build, they're underfunded, and the school board doesn't know where the funds are coming from. We need the tax revenue. These businesses, they want to come here. This is a desirable place. This solar people have been working in our county for years. They've helped write the ordinance system, not the community. They did, they want to come here. It's desirable to come here. We have the high transmission lines. Our land is cheaper than our surrounding states. They don't need incentives to come here. The last pilot, one of the last pilots for Rockwell that was defeated. Sorry, excuse me. That pilot agreement was for their property, and the expenses for a solar installation is a similar cost, $125 million for one, that's going to occupy 800 acres. The company, one company stated that only 40% of that goes into their inventory. Most of them are leasing their land. The tax revenue was estimated for that to be about $175,000 in local property tax revenue. What do these companies need a pilot agreement for? They don't need incentives. The torch is, a company that's been looking at this area again for years, and they desire to come here already. Why do we need a special meeting also? Why do we need to make a special meeting request for a agreement as well? This board meets, they can come in and address the rest of the public as well. I hope that you guys consider the impact of the tax revenue and how it's needed for this community, and that these businesses are going to come here and they don't need that additional incentive.
All right, next we'll move on to item number one, Ms. Angie Banks.
Good morning, can you hear me? I have one exoneration. It's in our 2022 personal property book, Harpers Ferry District. The taxpayer did not own the 2015 Chevy Malibu. It was assessed at $4,500, tax amount $107.20. Applicant is Sarah Soto, S-O-T-O, ticket number 308746.
Yeah, I'll move to approve ticket number 308746. Comments? All in favor, say aye. Post, which carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we're going to move to Matt Harley, prosecuting attorney.
Good morning. I'm here to add, seeking to hire Katie Rose, who has a, let me back up. So I have two spots open in my office where Denise, a longtime employee, retired, and then I have an attorney position that's open. So I have a paralegal lawyer position still open, and those have been open for quite some time. But so Katie, I'm hiring her for the paralegal spot. She has a, she graduated, she has a BA in government and international politics from George Mason University, and as of May 6, she will be a graduate of the University of Richmond School of Law. She is, she will take her bar exam in the future, but for now, I intend to hire her as a paralegal and at the starting rate of $50,000. And I'd like to ask that that be available. Her graduation date's May 6, so make it that day, and then she can start anytime after that, when she gets moved back and settled in. And until she passes the bar, you know, we plan to use her to draft a lot of briefs and do a lot of research and other tasks, and she may be able to practice some law under a limited scope.
That was my question, was if she, when she passes the bar, will you use her for your lawyer position that's open and then open the paralegal backup? Do you think?
If I do not find someone to fill that lawyer position, I would do that, yes. Yes, that'd be the intent, but you know, just to remind the commission, we have more judges coming into the county starting on January 1st, 2025, so you know, I need to be making plans to have more coverage and possibly another attorney, we'll see. This could be a solution, an early solution to that.
I have a question. Would you consider May 8, this is start date, since it's a Monday, you know, business day?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Any questions?
Just assuming it's budget neutral, since you have a vacation.
It is very much budget neutral.
Any other questions? I'll move to approve the hire of Katie Rose for $50,000 start fee anytime in May 8 or thereafter.
A second?
Any questions? All in favor, say aye. And I pose, motion carries five zero. Next, we're going to Tom Hanson. Item three. How's everyone today? I have several items on the agenda. First of all, I'd point out, the made delinquent lists have been ran and available for review at the tax office I've signed yesterday. Sheriff's Office, when I meet with the Jefferson, the West Virginia Sheriff's Association, I found out that the West Virginia, or should say Jefferson County Courts are sorely lacking in security. We are the only court system in the near area that doesn't have X-ray machines. And nowadays, with these purses that can be, can hide a gun anywhere, you get looked at by the bailiff at the front desk, and if they don't see anything, they're allowed through, and it could be raised a device into the courts. The court security grants are out now, and I'm asking to buy for three X-ray machines that will allow any package, including mail, to go through so that they, my bailiffs that are securing the courts and courthouses can know that there's nothing being brought into the courthouse. So I'm going to ask if the commission approve a supply for the grant, and if you approve it, then I'll have the president sign the grant that I have with me. Does he have any questions? Obviously, I see this is, that's an required match of fun, so. No, it's a, it's fully funded, yep. To approve the application for court security grant as presented.
A second?
Any questions?
Just that maybe you and then authorize yourself to sign, and then I'll authorize the chairman to sign the associate, the documents, thank you.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose, motion carries five zero. Two foreign reserves, I requested reinstatement to the program, Russell Volter and Christina Lopozzo. They have both left for personal reasons, and they want to come back to my volunteer organization to work as reserves. Any questions? I'll move to reinstate Russell Volter and Christina. Nancy, what's your last name? Lopozzo. Lopozzo has reserved it. Dependso, I'm sorry, Dependso. Dependso, okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose, motion carries five zero. Next item on the agenda is I'm requesting to hire another part-time bailiff, Raymond Campbell, start of May 8. As you know, we're always losing part-time bailiffs, most of them are retired. When I took office, I required that our bailiffs, we hire them either have law enforcement experience, military police experience, or some sort of security experience. They're not just somebody walking in off the street, and Mr. Campbell wants to come to work for me, for my chief bailiff, Jesse Jones, and he's, Chief Jones has done a back on him and wants, and likely start of May 8, at a salary of $15 now. Any questions? All right, I'll move to approve Raymond Campbell as part-time bailiff, start fee at $15 there, start fee is May 8, 2023. Last, the. I don't know, you're getting ahead of the shirt. Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries five zero. All right, yeah, there you go, sir. My apologies. Lastly, I'm requesting authorization transition, bailiff Daryl Wymer, from a 35-hour employee to 40-hour employee. This change would be effective on July. Funding was provided in the FY '24 budget that will cover this transition. Any questions? All right, I'll move to approve the transition, Daryl Wymer, to 40-hour, effective July 1st, 2023. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Anybody pose, motion carries five zero. Yeah, I wanted to let you know that Pastor Van was invited here to give the speech, do the prayer this morning, and the gentleman that was here made comments afterwards went outside and chest-fucked him as he was leaving. So I want to give you all a heads up about it. My bailiff tangled it, and Pastor Van doesn't want to press charges, but that's what happened. Thank you. All right. All right, next we're going to move on to item number four, Jennifer Myers. If you want to introduce your, remember?
Thank you guys for your time. I have Deborah Allen here, who is on the Jefferson County Parks and Recreation Board, and has been helping me through this whole process, and I believe Paul Marshall was going to jump in virtually. He's also been assisting with the project. He's also on my board, just in case there's any questions that he can help with as well. So we have two items on the agenda, I think, and I don't have it in front of me. I believe the first item was to request a letter giving us permission to hold the fireworks event at St. Michael's Park on July 1st. It is a new requirement from the state of West Virginia to have a letter from the land owners giving permission for the fireworks. So that request is coming from Digital Lighting, who has been the vendor that's been contracted as they're pyroteched for that event. That's number one, and I believe you guys have that letter.
Okay. Yeah, since we're funding, you know, funding, and we should probably give you permission too, right? That kind of makes sense. I'll move to approve, to give Digital Lighting permission to do a fireworks show at St. Michael's Park on July 1st, 2023, with the rain date of July 2nd, 2023.
Second, I'm sorry.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose, motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And another second, the second request I have in front of you, a lot of papers here, so bear with me. I think everyone is aware that we received an earmark of $925,000 from Senator Capito through her approvals last year, last spring, we got the notification. And since then, we have been working through them to get the money released so we can begin construction of the amphitheater, which we have all the funding sources lined up for at this point. So as part of this project, one of the requirements is that we have to do an environmental review and assessment because the project funding is being run through HUD. So HUD has done, I say, a whole list of requirements that we have to meet before they will give permission for the monies to be released. So we have worked through this. So we have worked through this environmental assessment with the help of Paul Marshall and some other, other volunteers to get the assessment completed, and we have filed all of the necessary paperwork. And we received notification, I guess, two weeks ago that we cannot, since we are not a governmental agency, that we cannot be the entity that submits the environmental assessment, that that would have to come from you as the county commission. They would not accept it from Parks and Rec. So we had, we had submitted it under our name and and done all of the paperwork. As part of that, we have to put a notice of finding of this significant impact and notice of intent of request to release the funds. This is a legal notice that goes out into the sphere of Jefferson. We have actually already run this twice prior to the asking to add your name to it to run it a third time to hopefully get approval from HUD to release the funds so we can begin construction. We're at the point where we have everything lined up and ready to go. We need, we need to break ground, we need to get this project finished, but we are right now held up in some, some paperwork to hopefully get that, to get that accomplished. So what we would, what we would need to do, and I believe, again, I believe you guys have have this Fonzie that they call it. So we would need to list the Jefferson County Commission as the responsible entity. All of your information on Commissioner Salinger with Simon's president, that would go, this will be reprinted in the sphere of Jefferson for its fifteen days, it has to be open for public comment. And then once we don't have any public comment, there's additional paperwork that would need to be signed, which I have with me, so you can sign. And then we would resubmit everything. Governor knows all the legality of this, so if you have any other questions, that's, that's the overview. It's been a lot of paperwork.
Privilege, that attorney.
I was just gonna ask, is there an approximate timeline for when you speak of releasing the funds?
So we, we basically had to go through the entire, even though the money was earmarked, we had to go through an entire grant process again to have the money released. So we have, at this point, submitted everything with the exception of the environmental review, it was still pending. And we got an email last, probably early last week notifying us that they have an abundance of requests coming through, and they cannot give us a timeline at this point. Unfortunately, it's holding up the project right now, and we have some other grants that are going to expire at the end of June. So we're, we're trying to push this through as, as quick as we can to hopefully at least break ground and get some dirt, some dirt moving.
So you've already, I just have two questions, actually. The environmental review process, you've already done that, or it has to be done?
We have done the environmental review. Through, and that's what Paul Marshall had worked on. He has a history with environmental and was able to do that review, so we didn't have to contract that out. And we have sent that to them, but they won't look at it until we support this Fonzie document and ask for public comment again with that. So it's all posted to like HUD and environmental, and they post everything for the audit. Once we send the documents again.
And then I do have a question, maybe. Can answer that, but in the environmental certification section, it has, the president of Jefferson County Commission consents to accept the jurisdiction of the federal court if the action is brought to enforce responsibilities relation to environmental review process, and that these responsibilities be satisfied. So that makes the county commission liable for any challenge or any foreseeable problems related to the environmental review. Is that correct? Or is that, I'm, I'm just asking if we could clarify.
Well, I don't think that provision touches on liability, but it does say that the venue or the jurisdiction would be under the federal law.
I think what it's saying is if there's a lawsuit, it'll be in the federal district court, not in the Jefferson.
Okay, I'm just making sure, yes, for liability and, you know, we're signing up to, to say we adhere to that. Okay.
Any other questions? I'm going to move to approve the county commission as the responsible entity to allow the release of HUD funds for phase two of the at San Michael's Park.
Second?
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you guys very much. So this will go out, all the dates are on the Fonzie there, this will go out in the spirit, it'll be next week, another one, within ten days. And I have a paper to sign, but I can't find one, so I'll catch you later. That's the other one. I'll look for it and try to. Thank you very much.
All right, next we're going to move to Russell, item number five, Russell Burgess.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Today, as you may or not, may or may not be aware, Andrew Rosen of our IT department, the gentleman back here, has tendered his resignation, so he will be leaving effective May fifteenth. Put me down to myself and Spencer Fraser will be running the IT department at that time. So my request is if, to replace Mr. Rosen, if we may advertise for the position of help desk information technology specialist level one at a starting salary of thirty-seven thousand five hundred. And hopefully you will approve that, and we can get some qualified applicants and get some.
I'll, I'll move to approve the information tech, technology department to advertise for Department of Information Technology Support Help Desk Technician at salary thirty-seven five per year for full-time employment.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Anybody opposed, motion carries five zero. You want to stay here, sit there, and I want to move to do business since you're here, because there's some items that you want to talk about. I mean, oh, this.
Oh, is this where you're going to come help in the IT department? I can use all of them.
I want to. I want to move, since you're here, we're going to talk a little bit about towers. I want to move to unfinished business, radio signal update, so with this with Jeff and then Fred Kinder. If we can pull up a chair up here.
Or two.
Or ten, or have Hitler want to join us? I'm used to feeling that. I can stop while you're here, too, if you come back, we're just going to bump it up, we're, we're running. Say this lightly. I want, I want you to have a daily gives update on what you were talking about last time.
Something, so Dustin McConnell, Dustin is the statewide interoperability coordinator. Fred Kinder's Western State Radio Tech. So since the April meeting, very shortly after, we already had scheduled the radio tech performed programming of Shepherstown PD's radios to remove site preferencing. I haven't heard affirmative or negative on it, I don't know if it made any change.
It, it's helping a lot.
So we're currently searching site options. In the last two weeks, our IT consultant was tasked to reach out to several business contacts in order to develop options for a potential site. We helped to curate a public-private partnership that leverages already allocated funding earmarked established by the county commission for site power. And so we don't know what actual infrastructure costs will be. They're approximately known because we know how much site costs, how much microwave costs, but the actual cost, we haven't initiated those specific parts of the building infrastructure yet. We, I have made contact with Motorola and I've talked to my Motorola contacts about a potential site in Shepherstown, and so I have, or plan on having a sit-down meeting with Motorola sales on it. After we realize the possible site options and they're identified, we're going to ask the state to perform studies, microwave link studies to the potential sites, giving us issues implications to the site, everything that might be factors in maintaining and installing a site. Purchase activity right now, though, we haven't hammered out any of those details as of yet. So as it's, as we are today, I understand Shepherd University purchased radio equipment. I don't have any info on what that exact number or info is, I think you're programming Shepherd University.
That was, that made, that was actually discussed at the last meeting with regard to the mobiles and portals. Jeff, I have the preliminary budgetaries that, since I was asked to bring to this meeting with regard to total installation of a site minus land, if the commission is willing to hear that. For the, for the Motorola site equipment, based on recent purchases, you're at about three hundred and fifty thousand. Tower steel and civil work, you're at seven hundred and fifty thousand. Microwave path or back hall is a hundred and fifty thousand. Your generator and transfer switch, equipment for that is thirty-five thousand. And the shelter and associated civil work shelter is about a hundred and five thousand, and build about fifty-five thousand in contingency. And that's, that's based on a, the, what would be a greenfield project, assuming that there's not a location that one, that the county would want to leverage that already has generated. So were you able to reach out to American Tower?
No, because we are researching actual sites that the county would own.
Okay. So with regard to that, as we discussed frequency acquisition, the location, and obviously, I don't know if that needs to be disclosed here or not, but we're going to need to know at some point to see that the frequencies are actually going to work.
Right.
And equally, that the microwave path will work as well, so. I'll be at the stand school until we can get that information.
I know, I'm curious to know where these locations are. I don't suppose it's appropriate to bring that up in front of the public at this point, correct?
Not to leave secure location, contract.
Right, so, so maybe we can take a few minutes in executive session and discuss that.
I don't know, I mean, where do y'all think, I mean, is it?
Is there a problem with that?
Do you, do you have the?
I, I know, I have a question.
Formal, specific formal meetings with the private partnerships as of yet. And so it is up to you, we can, we could talk about that a little bit.
The one thing, what I only thing is I would encourage you to bear in mind is, is until we put a dollar on the map, we're not going to be able to procure frequencies. And equally, I can't tell whether or not there'll be paths in there to get a microwave. And if, and if those two things don't come together, this commission runs a chance of spending a lot of money for nothing.
Sure.
So I think it would be a good time to get some, some locations out in the open, or at least out between the things to figure out where we're at.
I, I agree.
So would you all, how about we do this, what, what, if you all could communicate and talk about your locations, so you could figure out the best location, you can maybe run some tests, and you come back and you can, do what you want to do in the next session.
I do, just for a few minutes. This is not like, you know, an hour-long thing or anything, I just am curious, myself, living in Shepherdstown, and, yeah.
And I would also do, private partnership hasn't been fully explored, and I would think that would be the most possible method to follow. Public-private partnerships, so.
Anyone move a motion to go to executive session to learn more about the, the locations of the land?
Thank you, thank you. I do make a motion that we go into executive session in order to discuss possible site locations for the revenue segment of Shepherdstown.
Is the basis for that, like, the security issue? Is, is that what the basis for the?
Yes, yes.
Security and contractual matters, did that qualify for executive?
Okay, for contractual matters.
All right, I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Anybody opposed, motion carries.
We're in executive session.
I'll say the word.
All right, we're back. I believe that we come out of executive session.
Second.
And discussion. All fair to say, all right. Invite pose, but curious about you're next. We're going to move to agenda item number six. Roger Dooley.
This is Tom Lettsel from the West Virginia Conservation Agency. It's items concerning possible agreement with Jefferson County, which can be conservation agency. Possibly six months ago, representatives from the Western Conservation Agency appeared before the county commission, requesting that the county commission enter into an agreement with the West Virginia Conservation Agency, creating a partnership for preventing flooding of streams or flood event stream cleanup. The county commissioner referred the request to the county administrator, like that time was John Nessel and the chief county engineer for review, which since then has also included review by the county attorney. The West Virginia Conservation Agency has a technical expertise and possibly funding and grants to assist counties with stream flood prevention and stream cleanup work as noted in West Virginia State Code 713U, which essentially states that to protect the people and property from floods, counties municipalities are hereby empowered to re-channel and dredge streams, remove accumulated debris, snags, sandbars, rocks, and the other kind of obstructions from streams. For stream treatment or event flood is provided in this section, counties are further are hereby further empowered to accept any services and assistance which may be available from the federal and state government.
You left out a big chunk there, Mr. Dooley.
Do you agree with the whole thing?
No, no, I haven't.
The power and authority granted in this section may be exercised by any county. So it's under that section, county would have the authority to enter into this agreement. West Virginia Conservation Agency is making an effort to have these agreements already in place around the state before a flood event occurs. Therefore, the West Virginia Conservation Agency is requesting that Jefferson County Commission execute the attached agreement so that a partnership is in place to assist Jefferson County should the need for assistance ever arise. Jefferson County is free to decline assistance on any project and/or to terminate the agreement on 30 days written notice. To the West Virginia Conservation Agency, the attached agreement is presented for consideration by the county commission. And I have a motion there and the one thing I'll say is county commission has entered into at least one agreement with an outside agency or municipality. And as an example, we have an agreement that's on record at the request of then mayor Greg Vaughn, Corporation of Harper's Ferry, for Jefferson County to provide flood plain management on their behalf in order to satisfy the requirements with the state. And the result was that they then wouldn't have to incur the cost of hiring a person to do that for them, train them, pass an exam, get certified, and complete annual continuing education. So the state accepted that we would do theirs on their behalf. And that agreement is on record in the clerk's office until at some point the county commission decided they would want to terminate it. Vice versa. So I have a motion there on this. We've looked at it. We don't see any harm in entering into the agreement and I just leave it at that.
I have some questions, which I would do, but so one, I think the one section on your agenda request, the one paragraph indicates for stream treatments prevent floods. This is the second full paragraph in that 713U. It's provided in this section. Counties and municipalities are hereby further empowered to levy within the constitutional statutory limitations. Acquire property by purchase, exercise the right of eminent domain, domain, lease, gift, or grant, accept any and all benefits, money, services, and so forth. I really have an issue with that exercise of the right of eminent domain.
I do too. I have a big objection to this.
Which when you actually get to the agreement under the covenant, section two, item D indicates another streams or bank stabilization projects contemplated under this agreement involve the taking of land through eminent domain or condemnation. So that conflicts. I have an issue with that, but I would be curious to understand how many events have occurred in Jefferson County over the past 10 years where this would come into effect or play this agreement?
None that I'm aware of. And in response to that paragraph D, my take on that is while state code gives you authority to eminent domain, you're saying in this agreement, you have no intent of doing that.
Right, so no intent, the code gives us the right to do it, so I intend.
And the code gives you that right as a county. As a county, you are responsible to keep the streams clean. What what our side of this is, is that we would bring the technical expertise to the table for permitting, things like that. And each instance is addressed as a sub-agreement to this overall agreement. For instance, last year in Hampshire County, they had a tornado come through. Now, the governor never declared that, you know, in an emergency situation, but for about a mile stretch on the North River, it downed trees, you know, across the river. Well, the county ultimately is responsible to clean that up. What we did is through a 713U agreement, you know, we brought all the necessary partners to the table, you know, DNR, check with the Corps of Engineers if there was anything, you know. Basically, we handled the technical side of things and then they were able to get a contractor to come in and remove, remove that debris, remove those blockages. The advantage is from our standpoint, the agency, anything over a $2,500 contract has to go out to a bidding process, has to go to a formal showing and all of that. At the county level, you often go up to a $25,000 limit. So it also, you know, it aids in that respect. Land rights and things of that nature, we would handle through, through the county rather than us coming in as the state saying we want the land rights. You are the people that live here. You know the people that live here, so we try to handle things through the local, you know, governments as much as possible. It's, it more is a a general agreement that just says, you know, if need arises, we're going to work together. You know, we'll bring what expertise we have to the table, you know, to help the situation. You all bring what expertise you have, you know, facilities you have, and then we'll work together. And in each instance, it has to be agreeable by both parties, you know. So if they're, you know, over the weekend, there comes a horrendous storm and it knocks down a bunch of trees in John Doe's backyard across, you know, one of the main streams. You know, it, other than just the landowner themselves, you know, having to try to foot the bill, this gives an avenue that the county can come in and help and the state can come in and help if monies are available. You know, that's, that's the other thing is I know most county commissions that we have these agreements, but they don't have necessarily a line item in their budget every year for tree removal out of streams, obviously. So it's very much a case by case basis handled that way. You know, it's just, it's something that I passed, our past executive director had put into place. We have probably about half of the counties in the state have agreements.
May I interrupt for just a moment, please? In that very same paragraph, it does talk about counties and municipalities are hereby further empowered to levy. Does that mean tax? Is it levy tax? Is that what that term means?
It would be passing levy, but I think the thing about the, the thing about the, the thing about the 3U, that's in effect whether you enter into this agreement or whether you don't. That just gives a county all those powers and it doesn't make it have to be exercised.
Right, right. I don't, I don't like that and I, and it does concern me a little bit. I don't want this to, and I don't know if I'm jumping here, I may be, but I'm concerned about a rain tax and I think in Berkeley County they have a rain tax and I am not a fan of that.
I too was concerned about this issue and in our meeting I raised it with Roger. And I don't think that he thinks that this will lead us to that. And let me just say Roger has been very diligent in keeping this county free from that. And how that we got into that, and Roger can explain it better because it was before my county year. But how Berkeley County got into that was regarding a stormwater management agreement. And that tied into the Chesapeake Bay agreement. And that's why Berkeley County has that and we don't, really because Roger has told us that. But, but it also concerned me about this particular agreement. Because I, I truly do not know what some of the agreements with the state has with Maryland or the Chesapeake Bay initiative regarding this. And that's an unresolved question in my mind. I don't believe, based on our conversation with Mr. Lettsel, I don't believe that there are anything. And Mr. Lettsel doesn't believe that there's anything.
No, I mean, we have programs under the agency that are, that are sea bay projects, but they're not in any way tied to, not necessarily tied to this agreement. The other thing is the agency is not an enforcement agency in any way. I could tell you all day long, go, go put a tax on stuff. I have no authority to tell you to tax anything. We are strictly just to, you know, but we, what we do is we take care of flood control dams. That's the part that I work on. I work under the flood control division, under the watershed division. So we're responsible for the 170 flood control dams throughout the state and coincidentally, you know, tributaries and things of that nature. So that's where this comes into play.
So I guess that's what I'm trying to understand. I think that was the intent of the request last fall was, I think Mr. Letts had presented to put a time together for Jefferson County to meet with program officials to discuss and understand what our role would be. I think it's premature for this because we obviously have a lot of questions to do this right now before we understand possible projects or potential areas that could be subject to this agreement and how we would proceed forward with that.
I agree. I wasn't present for that meeting back, I think it was, I think you said six months ago.
It was back in November, Mr. Letts was in the agenda.
So, so what I, I mean, a lot of things about this agreement concern me. The first is defining stream as any water course distinguishable by banks and a bed, regardless of its size, which water flows continually or intermittently, regardless of its volume. And it just sounds to me as though when, when I'm hearing in here also about eminent domain, I don't like the idea that a government agency has, will then have the right to, to focus on that and come along and take that property for, you know, the purposes of whatever the purposes might be, if there is even an intermittently wet area. I don't like that. I think that that is infringing on a person's, you know, property and their, their rights of it. I, I don't like it. I also don't like under covenants where it talks about cost share funding. The Jefferson County Commission, you know, with the funding formula and, you know. I'm, I'm concerned about several things in here. Yes, so, so I've made my concerns.
No, I don't know if this is the same thing, but I know there's a wandering West Virginia Waterways invitation for the end of June. Where probably, I guess all commissioners got it, I guess, to participate in the meeting and understand the flow of streams in the rivers into the Chesapeake Waterway. It's Eastern Panhandle, looks like Morgan County, Berkeley County, Jefferson County.
It said Berkeley Springs.
Who sent you that?
It is Megan Deal from Region Nine.
I did receive the same invitation.
It's a, it's local government advisory committee on Chesapeake Executive and West Virginia wandering waterways. So it's a whole day event that she had sent out. This is June 30th, so I guess I'm getting that. I would like to understand a little bit more how our, our area disagreement and we impact that. I'd like to have some solid information to understand this whole process. I'm with Commissioner Kraus and I believe some of the things in the agreement may make me pause for concern.
What, when did the county, and obviously this was before I was here, when did the county agree to have this agreement drawn up?
It was brought to us by Mr. Letts and Mr. Tabb and I'm sorry, I'm going blank on the name of your organization. Eastern Panhandle Conservation District.
Yes.
It's Berkeley, Jefferson, and Morgan. And each county has at least two representatives from the county. Berkeley has three because of their population status.
Okay. Well, I, I'm concerned by several things in this agreement.
Are you looking at the agreement or the state code?
I'm looking at the agreement. Yes, the 713U agreement between the Conservation Agency and the Jefferson County.
Okay. I know you mentioned about the eminent domain.
Yes, sir. So I, I have issues with things on page two of six and three of six.
Could I make a suggestion that we email send the our, our concerns for this agreement? And then we'll have our county administrators email you the concerns, maybe is there possibly to clean this up and bring it back?
What, I mean, if there was an emergency and residents needed assistance, they wouldn't get this assistance if we didn't have this agreement?
Not necessarily. It is heavily dependent upon whether it's declared an emergency by the, by the state government.
So by the, the governor says that, you know, I've declared a state of emergency here.
If he has declared it, then in all honesty, most of the time this doesn't come into play. If a flood event occurs because FEMA can come in. We have what we call an EWP, an emergency water, you know, plan. That all goes into effect rather than this. This really is meant to be just a, a general agreement between the agency and the counties to, you know, agree that, like I said, we have a horrendous thunderstorm that comes through. It's not, you know, a national, you know, claim, but it knocks down, you know, a bunch of trees in a stream, you know. Like I said, ultimately, you know, that falls back on the landowner or the county. This just gives us an avenue to come in and try to help with permitting and.
I think that it, it, I, I think it's overreach. I think it's taking people's rights, their personal property rights. You know, there was just an issue at the Board of Zoning Appeals where a woman was about to lose her business over a piece of paperwork. And that was, I think, maybe 15 or 20 years ago. And I worry about these kinds of things and now the burden is on her to fix everything and, you know, paperwork wise and refile certain things and she will. But the point is I'm concerned about people not having, not, not being able to keep their, their property as their own. I don't, I don't like the idea of them domain all. I don't like that it's in here. I don't like the idea of this levy. I'm against, I'm against that. I have a very big problem with this.
I understand your concerns, but I'm also, you know, the other side of the view. As a farmer, I've worked extensively with soil conservation services and know their value. And also if you were here during Hurricane Agnes or the deratio, you know, we would need more than what the locals can do to help keep our waterways.
So isn't that when FEMA would come back?
Yes, but they don't, they don't get here very, very fast. And if we have this program in place, if we have trouble spots where things are building up in their creeks in our rivers, we can get them cleared before we have a terrible storm event and prevent a lot of damage. That's where I'm looking at it. This is more preventative pathway, another tool before, besides our stormwater planning that happens. And that's why Berkeley County has a rain tax. They never did stormwater for so long that they got behind the all of the bets.
I'm definitely against a rain tax, against eminent domain.
I don't like this, but I'm saying that the rain tax is not connected to this. That is why Berkeley County, they didn't do their stormwater very early on. And that's what happened to them.
Right.
So I'd like to consider this, but I understand your reservations.
Yeah, and just, just to be clear, the statute is what says that the county has the ability to do eminent domain. This agreement says you're not going to. This agreement says you're not going to do eminent domain related.
Well.
Or at least you're not contemplating, it's not contemplating. So. So the eminent domain is a function of the statute. And so you have that already already. Whether you implement this agreement, it's just the question of does the commission exercise it? This commission is not inclined to do that.
Does this document obligate the county commission for funding?
It would be, my understanding, the way it would work is we'd already have in place an agreement. And if the then occurred where we needed help and we're looking for money to clean this debris and stuff out of the stream, we could turn to the Conservation Agency who would provide possibly partial funding with us providing the other cost rather than all of it. And the agreement would already be in place and we wouldn't be waiting 30, 45, 60 days to execute an agreement to give us the authority to work together and get that funding. That was our understanding and our intent, and that's why we saw no harm in it. We can, we can have one where we can just say, we're going to go it on our own. We're going to pay the cost. We're going to go out and get stuff out of the stream and not even include a lord. Be one where we need their help and our expertise, especially with permitting from DEP, possibly Corps of Engineers for cleanup work within the stream. And they know that process better than we do because they're going around state for other counties and municipalities. So that's where we were coming from is what harm is there in possibly getting some funding to help pay for the cost of doing it and having some guidance so that you don't miss getting a permit you were supposed to have, et cetera. And even technical expertise on the best method to go for cleaning up a certain type of debris and what resources they may know of in that regard to the call. And that's where we were coming from.
So if I can just, item number four, the JCC shall identify and prioritize potential sites. I mean, that's what I guess I'm getting at. We haven't really had a meeting to understand the due diligence time needing this agreement. We haven't had an event that you're aware of, at least in the past 10 years, where this agreement would have applied. So I'd like to get some homework. This also indicates that provide an agreement upon a portion of cost share funding as determined by the negotiated funding formula for the project. So that's Jefferson County Commission also committing to that. I think the original intent was for us to meet with Eastern Panhandle Conservation District and understand the process for which this agreement was going to be needed. And then obviously with the moving waterways or the, it looks like Chesapeake Executive Council having their meeting. I'd like to understand the information behind this that leads us to meeting this agreement. And then some of the other concerns I think need to be addressed. I'm suggesting we table this until we can have these work sessions or understand more of how this is really going to impact Jefferson County and our residents or our major cities.
One more thing that I would like to bring up, under the same section for the JCC shall. Number four, rely on their legislatively granted authority to access the land necessary to implement the agreed upon projects. It sounds like force your way onto somebody's property and do what you want because you say it's what's best. Agreed upon by who? Agreed upon by the county and the conservation district or agreement? Or is the homeowner involved in that?
It seemed to me you would be asking, you'd be trying to obtain an access easement for the right to go in and get it to the street and clean it out.
Yeah, so that's my, that's my problem is if somebody doesn't want you to come onto their property, it sounds to me like you want to go around that.
It would seem to me that if somebody wants you to come in and you're going to have to jump through a bunch of hoops to get in there and clean it out, that you don't do it and it becomes our responsibility at their cost. I mean, that's just the way I see it.
Okay.
I'm not looking to get into a fight with citizens or anything.
No, no, but I just don't like the, you know, idea that government can do what it wants.
I would suggest that if everyone would take the agreement and provide comments or strike things if they want taken out, we can pull it all together and say, this is what the agreement would then say. And run it by Don and see if he thinks it would even fly on their end. And if it will, then we can come back, discuss it and see if you want to do it. If not, then I'd say, just say so.
Yeah, I also suggest we do that. Send your comments to Cindy. Cindy will send it to Roger and get them over to the property. We'll just take, if you could redline the version that you would want, strike, whatever, that'd be great. And we do have to hit this public hearing. Mr. Lutz has something real fast, I'm assuming. And you're with the Conservation District?
I am.
Okay.
Well, I have three points that I, as I listen to this discussion. Number one, when I raised this subject back in November, I asked for a meeting with the county commission. That was refused. It was, it's got news to tell. They made the motion to refer it for a per se. Second point, every provision in this agreement comes from the West Virginia Code. The Conservation Agency does not have the authority to set aside even one comp from the West Virginia Code. It had to be that. And to the third point, to address your concern about eminent domain, this is arbitrary, but it could happen. Stream floods, for whatever the reason, and a car is washed down a stream, lodges under a bridge, off its owner's property to remove that car, that is eminent domain because the owner of that car has the right to recover his property from wherever it is. Now, that's mundane, but that is what, that's part of eminent domain. If Mr. Cochran's trees are blown down along the street, they're still his trees. But someone has to remove. That's eminent domain. It has, it's there because it is in the code and we couldn't set it aside. You can't set it aside. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so Wetzel will do, we'll just send our comments to Cindy. Cindy will give us the proper authorities and then we'll hit this again.
Since Roger actually had mentioned this request, are we, we're tabling this?
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to, sorry, Mike and Alex, we haven't jumped to number nine for a public hearing. So we'll move on to number nine, Luton Land Development. You have a representative here. The board is here, sir. Thursday, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, County Commission members, staff, council. I'm Paul Rocco. I'm a local land use consultant. To my right is David Luton of Luton Land Developments. And the first rezoning public hearing on your agenda is in regard to that one. I'll proceed with the presentation. What's one of your opportunities?
How do you prefer to do it?
Well, just the county commissions required to ask the planning commission for recommendations as to whether to perform a conference plan. There could be a memo in your packet as well as the staff report that was done for the planning commission. And the planning commission found that they've been in a stove that proposed zoning amendment to residential and industrial commercial is consistent with the envision Jefferson 235 conference plan. If you have any questions about conference plan, I'd just like to answer.
I just want a point of clarification. I don't think, and maybe you've always done it this way. You said that, I'm reading, staff presented a finding to the planning commission that the RLIC zoning request is reasonably consistent with the envision 2035. I've always heard it's either consistent or why, so what's the fact?
The staff recommended, the conference plan showed it is industrial commercial. It's been industrial commercial for a long time and it could be industrial or commercial. The argument that was made in the application seemed to be a reasonable argument to the staff. It's not literally consistent with the map, but the, and so, but the planning, the planning commission itself found that it was consistent.
Okay, I just wanted to, yeah, make sure I was understanding.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, we'll pick up right there since that's easy. It's hard to pick up. The state code, as Mr. Cochran will tell you, requires that advice of the planning commission and the advice the planning commission was, without respect to Ms. Brockman's report, the advice from the planning commission by the unanimous motion was that it was indeed consistent with the conference plan. So that's, that's the statute advice coming from the actual planning commission. I know last time on a different rezoning, I passed out a little preferred growth area map that Mr. Tab asked me for. And I thought that I would show you, when we talk about preferred growth areas in Jefferson County, so it's going to be a little primer about zoning. These areas, there's only six of them in Jefferson County, so this is one of those areas. So when you see color, that's the only place you can develop in Jefferson County. So about 80% of Jefferson County is left in green. So when we come, there wasn't a lot of rezonings prior to 2008. That's from 1988, when zoning was adopted in Jefferson County. It was adopted as non-traditional zoning under the LISA Development Review System. So basically, we were told by the farmers and the community that we don't want zoning. So the only way we're going to adopt zoning, if it's a flexible type of zoning, that's not going to lock us into a zone forever as development passes by. And those that were put in a magic zone were given the power to use their property rights. And those of us left out will never have those property rights. So from 2000, or from 1988 to 2008, at that point I was gone, I left in 2007, the county operated under that system where you looked at the services available to the site. It's called the Development Review System or the Leasur System. Looked at the services available to the site and determined first, was it ready for development in terms of infrastructure? Were they close to schools? Do they have sewer and water? Do they have the other infrastructural components? Good roads to be able to pass through the next stage? So if you were given that authority to go through the next stage, you had a neighborhood compatibility meeting and the neighborhood was to come in and negotiate with developer. And it worked. Some folks didn't think it worked, but it worked because it was, that particular neighborhood was to impose restrictions on the development. Like take a look at the compatibility of what's around, what's proposed for development. Because the government's already decided services are available, so let's now talk to the neighbors. What do you want to see? So neighbors will come in and say, can you drop the density down to this? Can you, can you provide buffer over here? Can you move this part of the component over to the other side? Can you do this? And then the planning commission decided, and then the zoning board decided on which conditions would be imposed upon the subdivision. Where it started to fail is it became not a neighborhood meeting. There was just certain folks showed up to every one of these meetings for neighborhood compatibility meeting and imposed like 50 conditions that were the developer could not possibly agree to. So what used to be 20 negotiated conditions were agreed to and maybe two weren't. Where the planning commission determined which side they would fall upon to proffer out that agreement, they became 50 to 100 unresolved issues. So it locked down, it started to fail. And, and I mean, I particularly think that was the intent of folks starting to come to non-neighborhood based meetings. So in 2008, the county proposed a very strict traditional zoning ordinance that, as you may know, was defeated by petition and vote of the people. And it was thrown out. So in 2008, the zoning that was proposed was not very development friendly. And the folks on the mountain particularly came and opposed it because the area is around Mannings and was left out of all development potential. And if the further away from the towns, you basically had to leave your property in green. So they came out, voted against zoning. Zoning fails. So between 2008 and say 2012, the county started slowly transforming the existing non-traditional zoning ordinance into a traditional zoning ordinance. Problem became with the non-traditional zoning ordinance, you could, you only had three or four zones because everything else was allowed in green if you went through that system. So we only wanted to direct certain portions of development without having to go through that. So three or four zones. Well, traditional zoning doesn't typically have three or four zones. If you're familiar with zoning, you're going to find 20, 30 zones that has a lot of varieties of residential, a lot of variety of different commercial. So the county tried to do a couple extra zones. They proposed three or four zones, but couldn't make anybody go in them. So you still had the traditional zoning map with 80% in green. The availability of say seven zones instead of three, but nobody in the next four zones. So that's why most of the county is green, other than these small areas. So the rezonings you see, I'm going to say 90% of them are coming in, in this area. Because that's the only really place that you could support a zoning, rezoning. And that's really the only ones that I take come before you because I have less of a chance outside these areas for rezoning. I think I took one, it was Jefferson Asphalt, it was zoned rural. And it wasn't in one of these zones, so I took that one because it was Jefferson Asphalt. And it existed as a asphalt plan for a long time. So I just wanted to let you know about these preferred growth areas. They're not major areas. You're reviewing the conference plan now, so you should keep that in mind when it comes before you. That these are the issues that are going to come to you after you do the conference plan. It's going to open up more rezonings or less rezonings based on if you open up these growth areas or expand your number of zones. So when we asked for rezonings, we're limited to just the seven in the ordinance, three of which were traditionally available since 1988, the extra four that just came available. So that's why we asked for the mixed use. It was a zone that was adopted in, it wasn't even an original zone. It was a zone that was adopted in 1989 for areas along highways primarily. And we said, okay, we do want them to have the choice of what they want to do. So, so those areas along 340, Route 45 in Shepherdstown and Route 9, some of these areas were automatically designated as mixed use zone. But when the 2015 conference plan tried to get rid of the mixed use zone in favor of these other zones, the failure was you couldn't make the other folks fit into the other zones and you were still stuck with 80% of county green and some very small number of zones to seize. Okay, so this is in the preferred growth area. It's the acreage that was submitted to you. It's approximately 66 and 30 acres inside. As Ms. Brockman stated, it is an industrial commercial zone. You can do heavy industrial there. And this is a story I told the planning commission as well. In 1988, staff wasn't really set on putting that area in the heavy industrial zone. But the county commission said, when we brought the first map, first ever map to them, there's a railroad and there's a road, son. That's where development's going to go. Well, back in 1986, when we adopted the zone, it was ended by 88. That's the idea. You put your industrial growth along the roads and railroads and try to get services to them. Fast forward to 2023, it's not really limited to where we should split heavy industrial. In fact, heavy industrial doesn't pop to my mind when I think of the area of South River. Okay, and certainly the portion of Clark County north of Berryville isn't going to be developed into a hotbed of high intensity residential, industrial, excuse me. So this zoning request, we first came forward as a down zoning and said, well, let's just go rural. We just wanted to do a couple, you can't even do a family transfer in this heavy industrial zone. You can't even do one lot to your kid. Okay, so you're stuck. So talking about property rights, you have no right to develop unless someone knocks on your door. Just because it's all commercial and industrial doesn't mean there's folks knocking on your door for commercial and industrial. And they pop up in areas and in the new modern area, in areas in the rural districts where commercial is going. Because that's where folks seek services. That's why Dollar Generals are popping up as the local grocery stores across rural America. And this is the same, same type of zoning that we envisioned in Jefferson County. So this request at the planning commission said, you know, we're going to deny or say it's not consistent, it's rural, because it's a growth area and we only have six. We want urban-style growth. It may not be heavy industrial or commercial, but we want the ability for you to develop that into urban-scale residential, light industrial, commercial development. So the down zone from the standpoint of you can no longer do heavy industrial, but it does allow you to do a small few residential subdivisions. Some of the zoning was taken care of in the negotiations with the farmer who sold the land to Mr. Lutman, and that a third of the property, the farmer asked, can you keep that in green for me? Because that's agriculture, that's next to my farm in Clark County. So that was taken care of. So a lot of it was already negotiated with that neighborhood. So as a property within the preferred growth area, 340 South Preferred Growth Area, one of your smaller areas of growth, we respectfully ask that it be rezoned to residential, light industrial, commercial, based on the county planning commission's recommendation.
Thank you. Does Eli have any questions for that?
More like the, do you have a question?
No, no, I don't. I'm just laughing because it was a lot.
Yes.
Trying to take that.
Thanks. Just entertain me for a second. What is considered light industrial?
Light industrial generally is, first of all, either light or heavy has to have a 200-foot buffer. But light is generally, Jenny can correct me if I'm wrong, based on what she thinks, is the use of water, the heavier industrial manufacturing. And one of the new zones were heavy manufacturing. So when we envisioned heavy industrial back in the day, it may have meant manufacturing, okay? Which the state allows a broad exemption for industrial and manufacturing throughout the county without limitation. So light industrial is something that, again, it doesn't pop up just because it's zoned, but it's how I envision it, less water usage. So if you're not, if you don't have a central water source, you potentially could do light industrial, but I mean, I don't envision that popping up on 60 acres just because of the way it's shaped and the 200-foot buffer for industrial.
That's why you do it. So the way it's zoned right now, it's heavy industrial, and it does have a deed encoverance that roughly a third of it has to stay agricultural. So the deed that encovers it with agriculture, that's why originally we came to the planning commission and said, hey, let's just make this rule, we can already encumber a third of the deed with that, and that would be more consistent with the deed. So right now, we can do a third of it in agriculture, and the other half a third to roughly 60 acres in some type of, you know, large manufacturing plant, whatever it be, with smoke towers. So the goal here is to move it to mixed use. So whatever pops up in the south end of the county with the new highway, whether it needs to be a gas station, or a house, or our local dollar store, however that develops as the years come, it seems that we can do something that's viable, beneficial to the community. Right now, we're locked into one thing that we can do with it. That's it. So either way, I'm going to sell the property. I've got one type of thing that can happen right now. If this is approved, then we have things that may be much more viable with the community.
Yeah, and I was just trying to understand the use of the terms, and you're heavy to your life, so.
Sure.
See my outstanding for the question? All right. Since this is a public hearing, I do have to open up a comment. Yes, sir. Is there anybody here that would like to make public comment on this particular item? Here none? All right. If there are no objections, the public comment period is closed. I do have a, do you have to sit back down? I will check my, but. See if he, we'll check, see if he has his hands raised online.
That was, sorry, that was for this morning's public comments. Was it? Okay.
Oh, dear. And we could just get in the channel to see if anybody else had, was online for public comments. It's not the only one.
All right, good deal. All right. Well, there are no objections, the public comment is closed. Nathan, moving forward, we have to say, we still have a comment that it is consistent with.
You all have to find, the statute says, the governing body with the advice of the planning commission must find that the amendment is consistent with the adopted conference plan. So that's what you have to do now if you want to get your.
Okay. That's all I have. All right, I'll give another motion. I think you made a very good argument as resented. I'm moved to accept the request as submitted by the landowner and find that it is consistent with the conference plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Very well. Appreciate this. All right. You want to stay right there, sir?
I will stay.
Yes, you can leave, sir. You can leave. Mr. Rocco. Next, we have another public hearing for ILA Properties. So your floor is yours, sir.
Thank you again. This was a record mystery. Thank you, Mr. President, commission members, staff, and council. I'm Paul Rocco. I'm a local land use consultant. To my right is Josh Ben Freewall with ILA Properties. He's along with the last one I forgot to mention, but this one is, these are two local landowners, a building house, and their local folks. You'll find a lot of the folks that I represent on the land use component are the local, smaller scale operations. And mostly, when you see me, it'll be for rezonings, and it will mostly be, if not all, the local folks that see me as rezonings. But this is the one that was shown on the map that I passed out with this tab's request.
Yes, there are better maps.
So it was, again, and I'll start putting these in all my requests, because they're colorful. This, again, is one of those preferred growth areas and within one of those colored areas. And the future land use map does indicate that it's for this type of development. This will be a little bit different than the last presentation, and other than the fact that the, as I'll let Jenny state, that the county planning commission did find it was also consistent with the conference plan.
So, yeah, the county commission sent to the planning commission this rezoning request for determination for consistency with the conference plan. It is within the Route 9 Preferred Growth Area. It's shown as mixed-use office and commercial. However, the planning commission determined that the residential, light industrial, commercial was consistent with the Jefferson County Conference Plan and forwarded that recommendation to you.
So a little bit different than the last one. The last one was a more confined area that explained why it became part of a heavy industrial commercial area back in 1986 and 1988 because of the road and the highway. Well, in this case, the 2015 plan picked up and said, well, what we have on Route 9, in between Route 9 and the new four-lane Route 9, which is now Route 115 and Route 9, we have an area that's served by water and sewer from Berkeley County with a whole bunch of nice commercial industrial growth on the Berkeley County side that has water and sewer available to it, which is the Liberty Business Park, the VA Center, of course, up in Baker Heights, and the commercial area that seems to jump on the Berkeley County side because Jefferson County had zoning since 88. So there was limited opportunities to develop commercial industrial on this side. So even though Mr. Lowe, who developed Liberty Business Park at the time, owned properties both in Jefferson and Berkeley County, because of zoning, the part that remained commercial industrial went onto the Berkeley County side, and we got the part that was residential. Okay? So it would have been nice to mix it up, and we could have shared it, but that's the reason why the 2015 conference plan recognized this is a growth area that's supposed to be served by Berkeley County water and sewer. And the good part about this property is it's almost centrally between the short road interchange on New 9, Four Lane, and the Shepherdstown interchange. So the area on the map that I passed out before shows the Carneville Hub, Carneville Hub, which is that circle, leading all the way up to the Berkeley County line. Even with the heavy industrial area that county rezoned to heavy industrial many years ago, when it was supposed to be a large industrial site that was coming in, but that's not part of this, that area that you see in there is already zoned heavy industrial. The rest of this area that was rezoned through the years to mixed use based on the 2015 conference plan and the 2004 conference plan, the rest of this area and the surrounding area, including property across the street owned by Mr. Freewall and ILA Properties, were rezoned to mixed use. And they're developing into a residential and a residential mixed-use community with many storage and a little commercial hub. And now, because sewer and water has done exactly what the conference plan suggested it do, come down from Berkeley County up to the point of Carneville, now, since Mr. Freewall did purchase that sewer and water to get there, you have to extend your own sewer and water lines. They're not, they don't go around these parts anymore. The property across the street from his existing development came available, it's only 12 acres, doesn't have access to the Route 9, it's just has access to Route 115. So he asked if he can get it rezoned for a small development, and whether it's commercial or residential, both would be allowed. Again, light industrial, if there's something I do agree with, maybe with Jenny, is light industrial is the weird thing in that mixed-use zone, but again, we only had three zones and we were adding one. So we were, it was going to be the catch-all zone that we wanted to add along the major highways. Well, 115, even after the new Route 9 was built, still is in the conference plan as one of the three primary highways in Jefferson County, being only 115, 9, and 340. So even though it doesn't have the major traffic that it used to have when it was nine between Jefferson County and Berkeley County, it has the capabilities to carry traffic because it is still a primary access highway. So being that it is in a preferred growth area in the conference plan, I'm going to bore you with those things, but I ask that all of that be made part of the record. But it is also on one of the major primary access highways, which is the three in the county, as supported by the conference plan. So with that and the recommendation of the county planning commission that it is consistent with conference plan, I ask that be used on residential, light industrial, commercial.
Does the commissioner have any questions? Because it's a public hearing, I have to open up a public, you probably sit right there if you want to. Or you move. Is there anybody here to make public comment on this item? Is somebody in the room? Is there anybody online?
That was from public comment this morning.
Is he still on there?
It still hasn't.
Then we should listen to what he has to say at the end.
Well, or if it's to this, or what it was, or it was just public comment.
True.
We'll reach out to him to make sure.
Okay.
Well, during the meeting, though, I think.
All right. Is anyone having, no one? Okay, good deal. All right. If there are no objections, the public comment is closed. I'll be having a new motion to accept this rezoning as presented by the client, or the owner, excuse me, and find that it is consistent with the conference plan.
My second.
Any question? Any discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will throw out, I mean, go to Jenny if you have any zoning questions, that's fine, but if you really want history of 1986 through today, I'll be happy to answer.
I wasn't in the office, but I'm listening.
I'd be happy to. And I was thinking.
He was elucidating the opposite.
I want to take a two-minute recess real fast. Stretch your legs a little bit. Tell them. All right. Welcome back. We're going to move to agenda item number seven. This is Alex, Director of Planning and Engineering.
Thank you. So this is a request for a refund for a fee related to an application that was withdrawn by the applicant. So the application fee was $300. After the public notice requirements had been met, the applicant refused his request. Joe Staff.
Slots are open doesn't mean they're not filled, they're being filled with part-time and overtime. Because that truck's on the street and has to operate, so. There's just, they aren't full-time people in those slots.
No, but I thought we approved 12 headcount. Or that, I guess that's what I was working from is we approved 12 headcount, I believe with ARPA. Until we could start actually getting through the transition and.
Right.
Billing and all of that to see the.
But even though those positions don't have full-time people in them currently. They're, the staff are in, there's staff in those positions because those trucks are in service.
So the funds are being used.
The funds, yeah. There, yeah, they're overtime funds and.
We've got to nail down though, what.
No, I, I, I completely agree with Commissioner Jackson, I think we need to fill what we have right now before we start adding any more. And, and then obviously probably look into where, you know. Get the staff in first and then we go from.
I mean. We need to start advertising for the increased base salary of the paramedics, that was approved in FY '24, so. That should. Yeah, that should help quite a bit, so.
Okay. Alright. Yeah, I'm on the same page, I think we need, we need to take care of what we got right now before we move forward, I mean, I know it's, it's a worthy ask.
Yeah, I mean, I would never turn down additional staffing because I could use as many as I can get. You know, even if I had to just put EMTs in every position because I couldn't find paramedics.
Right.
You know, boots on the grounds, boots on the ground, so.
Can we just get an update on what spots are open? And what the position is that's open for you to recruit?
Yeah.
And what we have.
Yeah, Cindy and I'll get together and get.
I would just.
Yeah, it's a bit complex because I have to have people that staff the trucks.
Right.
But they aren't actual full-timers working those spots, yeah.
And I was gonna ask, do you have a timeline or a general time that you think you're gonna start advertising with the new?
The new, I do have one of my, the guys that's head of my hiring committee, who's looking into some resources. Like radio, different types of advertising, so we can get that out there better. So, yeah, that's, I would hope within the next two weeks.
Alright, and then you have some labor expense?
Yeah, the, the typical monthly labor reimbursement for ARPA. Associated with the transition stuff. Because we're, like I said, we're, even though we're operational, there's still a lot of small projects and stuff we're trying to button up. So that this month is. For the month, that's for the month of March, eight thousand three hundred thirty and eighteen cents.
Yeah, I'll leave that. Labor expense reimbursement for eight thousand three hundred thirty dollars and eighteen cents to be pulled from our ARPA. On Thursday, aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Can we take a moment and see if this poor gentleman is still online?
You can see if he's still online, but. Oh, okay, okay.
They're Tuesday night.
Okay.
Thank you, I'll, I'll reach out.
Alright, we're gonna move on to agenda item number 11, interviews. So, we have a few items open for appointment. Sir, are you here for one of those?
Yes, sir, I am.
Which one are you here for?
Mayor Pearson came down and asked. Be one of one for Ranson.
Okay. Search, is that for the Jefferson County Department? Since you've been waiting here patiently, why don't you come on up, sir? Alright, if you want to tell us your name and. Introduce yourself.
Okay, my, my name is Donnie Haynes. I was on Ranson City Council for sixteen years. And. I was on the planning commission for Ranson. And Mr. Pearson asked me if I'd be interested in being on one of the committees here, and I said yes, I would, so.
Alright, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Haynes?
Oh, I, I do, do you? So, in, in the time that you were on the, the council, were you on the planning commission at the same time?
I was on the planning commission at the same time as I was a council member, yes.
I know, sorry, did you have something else to say? I didn't want to cut you off.
Do what now?
I thought I was about to cut you off, I didn't want to interrupt you. Okay, a question that I have, I know that Ranson had a hard time getting business going in Ranson for a little while. Do you have any opinion on that? Do you have any, I guess we're talking about development authority and what is your, what is your vision, do you think?
Well. City of Ranson. It's tough to get businesses to come in, in the city of Ranson. I mean, we've got some in there now, but it's, it's tough getting them to come in because of some of the regulations and stuff that they have to face to be able to come in there, so. It's not an easy job getting people to come in, where you got so many things that they have to fight to get in, so.
Are these regulations of, an issue with Ranson or with the county?
Some of it's with the county. Ranson has. So many, like, when a business wants to come in, they have to put their business up in front of Ranson's council. And then the planning commission gets it, and if they can get through the planning commission, then, you know, they can put their business in here. But. We just haven't been able to get the people to come in. It's, it's getting better. Thanks to Mayor Pearson, I mean, he's, he's had a big hand in getting businesses to come in, so.
So what was the problem with getting business in Ranson while you were there?
I don't think that it was a problem, I mean, these people, they, they want to come in, but they don't want to have to put out the information and stuff, you know, the. Taxes and all that stuff, they don't want to have to deal with all of that, and it, it's tough. Tough getting, you know, people to come in, I mean, the. Tax that they put on. For businesses now, it's what, seven, seven percent, I think, isn't it?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
But it's seven percent, like if you sell something. Seven percent taxes goes to the city. And. I, I don't agree with it, I think, you know, I, I know that the city needs to generate funds and stuff, but. To charge people seven percent off of their, like if you sell something for a hundred dollars, you know, you got seven, seven cents off of it every, every dollar, so.
Sales tax, right?
Yeah.
Does, does that money go to the state or does that money go to Ranson?
That money goes to, Rans, ends up going to Ranson, what it goes to, so. Yeah, and the hotel motel tax, you got all of that coming in, you know. We've got some nice motels and hotels out over there now, but when I first came on, you know, we didn't have anything nice. But.
Yeah, I just had some follow-ups, so given what the environment was in Ranson, and then you alluded to some things with the county, what do you hope to do different if you're put on? Or how do you hope to change things if you're put on the JCTA?
I'm hoping, you know, to get. Some property open so that people can put their businesses in. I mean, it's, it's, it's a tough, it's tough getting people to, like I said, you gotta have the right thing for people to come in and put their businesses in here. I mean, we've got one that is moving out of Ranson. Right in town, in Old Town Ranson. And he's moving over into the new section of Ranson over by Chick-fil-A. That's gonna be Andy's Pizza and Sub Shop or whatever it is, he's building a new one over there, so.
So, and just following up on that, what would be your vision? What type of businesses would you like to attract to Jefferson County?
To Jefferson County, I'd like to see another car dealership come in here to be truthful with, I mean, there's. If you want to get a, buy a car now, you gotta go to Martinsburg or Winchester or someplace like that to buy a car, so.
Does anybody have any further questions? Thank you, sir. Do we have anybody online, you're fine, you're fine. Do we have anybody online that's here for the interviews?
Yes, please, sir, David. Do you know why?
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll take care, we'll take care of the JCTA versus like Rob Steiner, Darryl Wilk on their financials.
I know that they've definitely reached out and left messages for them.
Mr. Benner did contact me and he said he wasn't interested in serving in his. And then somebody else reached out too.
I know that Mr. Darryl will reject.
He rejected, okay, so, yeah, they, they had second thoughts, I guess. So the only person would be Rob Steiner?
And the number that Jessica found was.
Oh, wow, okay. Alright, so we have four names, one we didn't get ahold of, two are having second thoughts. So, Mr. Haynes is certainly willing to serve on his board, it's hard to find people to serve on boards. I would, I would like to move motion to point Mr. Haynes to the Development Authority as the Jeff Ranson representative. For a three-year term ending in April, 2026. Anybody, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four one. Alright. Next we'll go to. See, David is, what do you? Okay, okay, so Home Consortium and Property Safety, is he online?
He was the one that we could hear that I had to use.
Oh, okay.
Mr. David, are you online?
Did you turn the volume back up?
I did. Not listed on the name, but he sent an email saying that he was on the train station, so that's the sound that we heard earlier.
Okay, alright, well.
David, are you online? David?
David, can you hear us?
Yes.
Alright, you have, you have applied for, I believe, the Home Consortium Council? And the safety ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, alright, does anybody have any questions for David?
I do.
Go right ahead.
Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm on the train from Harper's Ferry to DC, so I apologize for the connectivity issues.
Okay. What, what, I see that you've, you've applied for both of these. I suppose I'm trying to figure out which one, which one you, you want, what do you prefer?
Probably the property safety enforcement, I would defer to the commission as to which I would be the best fit for. I've applied for, I think, several positions in the, sort of the recent past. You know, lived in the county for four years now, I was the vice chairman at the Harper's Ferry Water, Water Commission for about a year. Right, right as a freelancer for local media, and I just wanted to keep involved with the community. Think I would be a person that would be a good fit for either position. You know, that's the commission structure.
This is Jane Cab, what is your understanding of the role and authority of the Property Safety, Safety Ordinance Enforcement Agency?
I read through some of the information on the commission website and some of the bylaws. You know, identifying and addressing sort of abandoned distress to possibly take its property from the company. As journalists that have some experience recently write about the Thomas and Ford location in Charlestown, which would probably be an example. The type of property that comes under the rubric of that, that agency. But. Sort of handed in with the commission evaluating, providing sort of advice related to this.
I don't, they meet in the evening, don't they? They meet in the evening, I'm pretty sure, but I don't know like when.
I don't know yet.
Do you, I'm sorry, so this is Jennifer, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, Jennifer, thank you.
Okay, I, I'm curious to know what, do you have any experience with respect to property safety?
Not directly, just the, in the interaction that I, that I come across with and some of my journalists I got first and just the other person. You know, that kind of covers, covers. City government beats for newspapers over the years. But I've never been a property owner, but I've worked, I've worked for contractors. In a sales capacity and so. Sort of rudimentary knowledge of kind of building codes. Contractor-related. Projects, interior and exterior. But no, no direct hands-on experience in terms of that.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any further questions for David? Alright, thank you, sir, thank you for joining us.
Thanks, all.
Does anybody want to nominate anybody at this time? And then we'll move to agenda item number 12, sir. Nathan Cocker, now.
Very well, the issue that I would like to discuss with you today is. There's a minor boundary location issue between Berkeley and Jefferson. And I just need to feel, make you aware of, however, because it could potentially involve some liability or litigation. I would recommend that we do a session at this time.
Then I'll move to doing the sessions, we receive legal advice under 12B.
Okay.
Any more discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
That is, motion carries five zero.
All right, everyone, we're on, oh, okay, I'll leave you to come down and exit your session.
Okay.
Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, which carries five zero. Next, we'll move on to fourteen hospitality requests. With some.
Oh, yeah, this is to finish, we talked about it a little bit at the last meeting, we're just looking to finalize it and actually ask for motion to approve funding. This is for the roads summit, transportation summit we're hosting on the twenty-third. Got a lot of great speed, we're really getting some good attendance, and we're gonna get some voice finally that we need to report some of our problem areas. But it is a long day, because we're gonna start in the morning, we're gonna take them on an actual bus tour of the county to identify the spots. So we are asking to, you know, provide nourishment and lunches. And it may not, I'm asking for the max of fifteen hundred, it may, Charleston and Ransum have, you know, have exact commitment from them yet, because they just were meeting last night. But they were asking two fifty from each of them, so the cost will be hopefully lower than fifteen was the match. But we're just looking for official motion to approve the hospitality request for the roads summit.
I did want to say, I did email Roger yesterday late afternoon to see if he did speak to Kathleen at the forehouse.
Okay.
Trying to get that number lower, it does seem a little bit high, but, and I hadn't heard back yet, so I assumed he is preparing for whatever his thing here today. So, you know, I haven't checked my emails since we've been here, so I'm not sure about that, but yes.
Certainly do have to have some type of approval, I think, we have to move a motion to approve the hospitality request of two fifteen hundred dollars. And you can identify where those monies can be from, wherever you think it is necessary.
I've got it picked out already.
All right, you do.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right, new business, we haven't already touched on that a little bit, giving, well, not really, we touched on.
Just more, right.
Yeah, a little bit more ESA stuff.
And I don't know, so I guess it's just to talk about really the future organization, as to the role of the board, when the board is gonna assist to exist. How, what that looks like, it's really, I don't know what thoughts legally we've got, or if you guys have any input. Because really, the commission, you know, these are county all the time, we're operating a service, it's all, it's county really operating going forward, so.
Well, I mean, the sooner the better, I know it takes time, and I know we're working on some numerations, the V I N number. I think once that takes place, it sounds like we're good then. That sounds like, I don't want to put words in your mouth there.
Now, as I've told the commission before, I've been working on organizational documents. There are several organizational documents that have to be adjusted. One would be the ambulance fee ordinance, and another one would be actually the ordinance under which the ESA is organized. Because we would have a different organization as, as you know, moving forward, transitioning from the agency to the department would create a different organizational structure. And so I will, I basically have those documents in a draft form. And I hope to give them to you before the next meeting. And then you all can decide what to review and maybe look to put them into that. Obviously, it would change formats of the organization to where the organization would have a director, much like any of the other departments. Like Roger Goodwin is the head of planes, and the ESA would have a director of some sort who would be answerable to the county administrator. Who would be answerable to the county commission, right?
Chain of command.
It would be like, so I think that I should have those documents to you by the next meeting. There do remain a number of issues related to financial concerns. As Mike was talking to you about, they just need to be resolved. And a lot of that deals with dealing with the IRS and dealing with Medicare, Medicaid people. So it would be great to get some advice on that sort of thing from folks who are experts in it. I'm good on employment law, and I'm good on land use law, and I'm good on probate law. But tax law is something that I've always hidden from most lawyers. Because lawyers are people who would have been doctors, but they couldn't, except for about ten percent of them. But honestly, it's a kind of a mergers and acquisitions question, as far as some of those things, it's not insurmountable. But we can get some input from some folks like the people who are sitting here talking to you, something like that. Okay.
And then a clear, so they are moving forward, they did the first round of interviews for the director, full-time director position. And I think their next board meeting is the sixteenth, where they'll have like a second round of footers chosen to go forward. And then, I don't know if they choose this threat, you know, if they kind of choose their selection at that, or they review further. But, you know, this person will technically report to Michaela eventually. So I don't know, to be fair to these candidates, I just, it's something we need to start thinking about how to handle our room.
So in the past, the candidates have, or at least the last time that the board was faced with that. And I think the final selection is down to some internal candidates that had applied, which is neither here nor there. But they were advanced to the board, or conducted interviews in private session, much like we did with county administrator. And then the board voted it.
On that same night?
Yes.
They didn't?
Yes.
Because their next meeting will be the sixteenth, and then we don't meet again until the eighteenth. So there is a chance that you all are not, you know, you don't, hopefully, small chance, I think they'll pick the qualified person, right? Just something to think about as part of this transition.
I appreciate that.
Because I think in all fairness to the county administrator, if you're gonna want to.
Right.
Right? I don't know if they.
It's gonna be a pleasure, at least the final round.
Yeah, I think maybe the county administrator should be, should see.
Definitely come to the board meeting and set through that private session.
Yeah, I think if that could happen, that'd be great.
And have input with whatever direction they consent to.
All right, anything else for emergency services?
Nothing.
All right, meeting room, I would move on to the gym item number sixteen, meeting room use request. Looks like that is near to here. Then typically, we typically allow this room to be used for nonprofits, is that correct?
Right, and the, I know the local party organizations.
Okay. And, and this is a nonprofit, I'm showing, okay, is anybody having further, any questions?
I was wondering, I think we had one other come before us with this question, if they would be allowed to use the space. And I, I think that there was a cost associated to them for the use of the space, is the same in this instance?
No, the, I can't remember the name, the, I wanted to do.
It's like a children's campers.
Yeah, but it was a for-profit business. I think we proposed forty or fifty dollars for a fee, but then.
Well, yeah, really all that's ever been implemented was a forty dollar deposit.
Okay.
For damages or anything like that.
Okay.
And then we, and I, but we, the fee has never been done from what.
No, I know, we don't have that.
Right.
My point was, if it was a for-profit business, they should pay a fee, but we have everyone in here wanting to use it for profit. Plus, we have some expensive equipment in here.
Sure.
Okay, so there would be no cost, is the answer?
No profit, that is nonprofit.
For that to Republican.
Yeah, yeah, there's multiple meetings in the board pass with several different organizations. Okay, I'm not with.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is anybody else setting for the question, someone?
Yeah, I do, I guess I vaguely remember, I think that group might have been asking for the same night, didn't know, I mean, we keep a calendar, right?
It was, yes.
Yeah, or like one Tuesday.
Yeah, and then I guess if we have to have a special something, we get priority, right? Also, that's just part of the agreement.
Yeah, yes, I would just say, we would have priority at any event. All right, I'll move to approve the use for the space here, just kind of meeting room for a nonprofit on Thursday, third Tuesday, month seven, not the end.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No security, five zero. Um, county administrators report, this is.
Wrapping up with me.
This is Cindy, yeah, Cindy, we didn't make an hour.
Okay. So the first, my first one, I, so I did reach out to Tyler to tell him here to get more in detail, and have them look what they were actually gonna provide. I couldn't connect with the account manager, because he was traveling, and then he got back in, and he said, you gotta contact the actual analyst that's doing it. So I'm still waiting for that information. So I'll probably reintroduce it the next one, this gives Michaela a chance to get on board with us this week, and she can kind of look at as well. Together, we can kind of see where we are with this project and what Tyler can do. So we can use that next time, and then, okay, if you're ready, everybody's got their math hats on. And there's, I know I send a lot of info with the benefits. But I think it actually ends up with, I think, a good news story. But they, so they did put it out to bid, we had talked, our broker, Millennium Group, is gonna do that for us. And we're definitely, we're sticking with Highmark, because the only two companies, Aetna and United Healthcare, couldn't even, they declined to even provide a bid. They said they couldn't compete, and that's what those first two letters are. This confirmation of them that we reached out, they were like, we can't do it, we can't even touch it, and so they declined. So the one thing I would like to approach the commission on, to benefit our employees, is to keep their contributions the same. Not to raise that, since we just did, we did a five percent merit increase, and any additional benefit is just gonna take away from that. And we can still get a very good rate within the months. What we'll take a little bit of risk on is changing to a higher deductible plan. Currently, we're at the four thousand, eight thousand, and we can take that up to six thousand, twelve thousand, we get a much better rate. And there's really, in their history, they've been doing our, Millennium's been doing our benefits since two thousand and fourteen. On average, only thirty, thirty to thirty-five people ever hit the maximum deductible, so it's really a low risk for.
But we cover that deductible.
We do, correct, so that, and again, that would stay the same for the employees. They're responsible for seven fifty for a single, fifteen hundred for family. So keep that the same, the risk is gonna be with the county, the commission, yeah, the county would cover. But by increasing the risk, it's a lower rate. So it really ends up, what I think, probably the best one to look at is the summaries page. So with the rate, and then the other thing, this is a big change, and I know this is gonna, it's not gonna please everybody. But we would change the dental under Highmark Presidental Program, and if we move it to under them, we go away from Delta. But I receive, honestly, I've gotten a lot of complaints about Delta, that some people probably love it, and some people, but.
It doesn't do anything for me.
Yeah, and it's, my dentist actually dropped it, I know some other people reported it, I don't know. But if we move it under Highmark, this United Concordia, it's a very good plan, it's called their Elite Plus, we get a two percent discount off the medical plan. So it really would be a number, like, really would be the best business decision. And I know, I know it's tough, especially people are, you know, they grow accustomed to their same dentist. This plan will still, it covers the same, whether it's in-network or out-of-network. The only thing that might be different, like, if you've got a dentist that doesn't accept the plan, you're gonna have to, the member would have to pay the bill, and then submit the claim. It's still covered, but you're, there's a little bit of an extra step, but they've got like an app, on, you know, speedy claim, you can just run in your. And if you're, if they are in the network, or even just if they accept it, then it's, they submit the claim for you.
Now, is this, this two percent discount, is that just within the Delta dental plan, or is that?
The two percent discount is off the Highmark medical.
But what if we have employees that don't take a dental plan? Are you saying they have to, have to be together?
No, they would just decline them.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that options.
Yeah, no, it's still, it's, you can't force anybody to take that.
I didn't know if it was a package deal, that everyone that was under our health insurance had to take the dental to.
No, okay, it's optional, but you don't, but Delta won't be an option for anyone.
Right, I know, I meant dentals, yes.
Does that cost the medical already assume a two percent discount?
Yes. So even with all that being said, on that summary page, with our different, the deductibles, for the eighth, the five, the tenth, sixth, the twelfth. Sixth and twelfth is where you really see the biggest amount of savings, two hundred and ten. And we come in, this is under, to me, I think Millennium did an excellent job negotiating this for us. Because it's really not even, we budgeted in twenty twenty-three at two point, like, two million, the revised budget. This year, we budgeted two point three, and so we'll be coming in under.
And so you said, right now, the deductibles are four?
Correct, four and eight. So even if you had double the amount of people that maxed out to the sixth, it's still gonna be, it's still within the two hundred and ten thousand for savings. And the dental plan, I will, the one good, and I would like to go with the Elite Plus covers a higher amount, fifteen hundred versus one thousand. That's better, they say in insurance legal, it's a richer plan. It's better for the dentist as well, and better for the member, so. And there, I know it's a lot of, but I think it's, and then the other vision stays exactly the same, health insurance, exactly the same, same carriers, same prices, no changes for that. But I know dental will be a big one, and Millennium has been very, you know, they're available to take phone calls with anybody that has any questions. And, you know, I'm available, my team will be available for questions, but that, you know, it's a change, but hopefully a good one.
No, everything was, to me, was good.
Well, and I wanna repeat, and Cindy, you correct me if I'm not saying in the exact right manner. Employees deductible, they would be responsible for seven hundred and fifty for single, fifteen hundred for family. That the county will pay the remaining part of the deductible, so I want them to know that deductible is staying the same.
Yes, without questions, so. And when we get the communication out to them after we go, hopefully today, I'll even be reaching out, I will highlight that very much.
I can option three.
Make a motion.
Yeah, I will make a motion that the.
Motion to accept that one. Option number.
I will make a motion to accept Highmark of West Virginia Health Insurance Renewal Option Number Three.
I was just going to ask to amend that that option number three includes dental vision and life insurance.
I meant to include dental vision and life insurance.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Okay. So we're all, that, that covers, that motion goes all the way back to there. Okay, because I was looking at this and breaking my head, which was the one, so that's all right. All right, is there any more business needs to come forward to commission today?
No, it was an honor serving as your interim county administrator.
You did one there, good job. All righty, Jim, if there are no objections, we're adjourned. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Oh, what, you know what, this guy.